Call me to your order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, could everyone please stand up back up? Sorry about that. We, we lost a member of our community this week, Bill Pringit, Pringits, our retired police chief from the Mount Clemens Police Department. He retired in 1994 after serving our community for 27 years. He passed away on January 7th, 2020, so we'd like to have a moment of silence for him, please. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Crowe?
Here.
Mensah?
Here I am.
Voorhees?
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, and communications and reports. Benny? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt agenda as presented.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
This is the time of the meeting where we have public participation. All that we ask is that you give us your name, your address, and you limit your comments to three minutes.
Don't give it. I was just giving somebody else a chance.
Okay.
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I have two issues. Number one, this coming March, there will be an election and on that ballot will be a yes or no to continue the millage for the DIA, no. When they first asked for it, if you remember, oh, this is the only time we want it. After this, we'll use it to go after an endowment, and here they are again with their Baker Bowl. And yet, they can't raise their own funds, but if you remember when the city of Detroit was going to go after the DIA collection because of the bankruptcy, suddenly they become very good at fundraising, so let them do it again, get off our roofs. You want me to come to the DIA? Do you want me to go down and grass it? So I gotta go through zip code 4820-DIE, which is 48205. It's the worst gun history, gun deaths in the area. Or you want me to go down the expressway where they, you know, just vote a no on the DIA, let them do their own fundraising with people that are interested in it. Number two, I'm interested also in the election where the city commissioner will be chosen. I see, after having analyzed the elections from 1889 to present, that there is a need for the Northeast Quadrant to be the first out of the gate. I hope, if you don't have any other reason not to, that you vote for the lady from the Northeast Quadrant, because although, yes, Joe Raker was in a whole term, Bill Ford was in two pieces. And mostly, at the time, after the charter passed, when the power began to lead the quadrants, it left the Northeast, then the Northwest, then the Southeast, and it all settled in the Southwest. The Northeast has been for years not only bereft of representation, but it's been kind of regarded as the dumping ground. We're the dumping ground for industry, it's a dumping ground for other things. And even one of the former mayors used a very pejorative term regarding it when he wanted to put in his baseball stadium. So let's put in someone from the Northeast Quadrant and undo history from the beginning and bring it back. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Moving on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes as amended. As corrected, I should say.
Motion to approve the minutes from our regular session of January 6th, 2020, and our special meetings of January 13th and January 14th, 2020.
As corrected?
I'll second.
As corrected.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Moving on to 9A, public hearing for the allocation of Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding for fiscal year 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to open the public hearing for the allocation of Community Development Block Grant funding for fiscal year 2020.
Support.
It is expected that the city of Mount Clemens will be applying for approximately $163,584 in CDVG funding for the 2020 fiscal year. Up to $150,000 can be used for one capital project, while the remaining $13,584 may be used for nonprofit organizations. The purpose of this agenda item is to elicit public input from residents and nonprofit organizations on how these dollars could be spent within the city. Notice of the public hearing, which is attached, was published in the Journal, also attached is a list of nonprofit applications that have been pre-approved by the county.
Okay, thank you. This is the portion of the meeting that you can address the board. We ask that you give us your name and organization you're from, and your address, and also limit to three minutes, please.
Karen Bates Gager, Turning Point. I actually am a Mount Clemens resident, 147 Lodwick. So I am here to ask for community development block grant funds on behalf of Turning Point. A couple of things about Turning Point. This is our 40th year of serving the community. We started in Mount Clemens and we are still in Mount Clemens, serving Mount Clemens residents as well as other communities throughout the county. Some of the things that Turning Point does offer is a 24-hour hotline. Last year, our hotline answered almost 1,000 calls a month. We average between 900 and 1,000 calls. We do have an emergency, 52-bed emergency shelter. We have a group called CAP, which works with the residents when they leave the shelter for additional advocacy. We do group and individual counseling in five locations throughout the county, including here in Mount Clemens. We also are the staff people at the Personal Protection Office here at the Circuit Court Building. That is a partnership that we've developed. So if you go in there, that is county space, but it is Turning Point employees that are helping. We have legal advocates throughout the court systems throughout the county. We also do all the sexual assault cases, all the exams from Macomb County and St. Clair County. Last year, we did 374 sexual assault exams. 180 of those were kids under 18, and 46 were kids over the age of 12 in Macomb County. We also are doing, we do community education and prevention. We are in a lot of the local schools. We are not actually in Mount Clemens, but we are in 19 of the school districts. Last year, we saw 10,000 kids in our, in our prevention education program, as well as we have a speakers bureau, and we're out in the community talking to civic groups, any group that will have us, so that's another part of what we do. So last year, 2019, we had 453 shelter nights for Mount Clemens residents. We had 37 women and five children that stayed in our shelter for, again, a total of 1,453 nights. That cost to Turning Point is over $100,000 to house those folks, feed them, and take care of them, and all the pieces that go along with it. So we are requesting $15,000, which is kind of a drop in the bucket for what we spend. In addition, last year, we had 10 survivors that we helped with PPO that were Mount Clemens residents. We had 10 Mount Clemens residents that were in our counseling program. We had three Mount Clemens residents that were in our legal advocacy program. We did three sexual assault exams for Mount Clemens residents, and we had 27 residents that used our hotline. So you can see that we are taking care of the Mount Clemens residents as well as people from the other communities. So I think I have a minute or two for any questions. I know most of you are familiar with us and what we do, but I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for serving the people in Mount Clemens.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Well, I'm on the circuit. I will be in Washington Township tomorrow, and I've been in a lot of other places, but I actually volunteered for this one because it's close to home and I have lots of familiar faces here. So we would appreciate your support, and anybody that needs our services, please know that Turning Point is there for them.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is just, it's an open town hall that you can, yeah, it's a public hearing that you can, sorry.
Well, I wouldn't leave my two cents out, Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I would ask you, reviewing that, any of those dollars that are specified to go to nonprofits will have to go, but any non-specified, I'd like to remind you, charity begins at home, and until you get that five extra mills off our roofs, that's where the charity belongs, here.
Oh, yes, please come on.
Hi, my name is Nikki Pittman. I'm a forensic interviewer at Care House. Our address is 131 Market Street. So Care House is the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center with our main office located in Mount Clemens and a satellite office located in Warren. Our services are focused on child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or children who have witnessed a violent act as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to minimize trauma for child victims of abuse and to help the child victim and non-offending family members through the investigation and prosecution phases and provide support to begin the healing process. Care House is one of 34 accredited child advocacy centers, or CACs, in Michigan, serving over 53 counties and one of over 800 in the United States. Who we collaborate with? All law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, medical and mental health professionals, and other child welfare agencies as determined by the case. I have some updated statistics for the city of Mount Clemens families we served in the past year, but first I would like to share a quick story with you about Abby. Abby was four years old. Abby's mom, Renee, was raising Abby alone and struggling financially. Finding affordable housing was very hard, and Abby's mom was afraid they might become homeless. One day, Steve, an old family friend invited them to move in with him. He had a large home with plenty of space, so they moved in. Things really seemed to be looking up for Abby and Renee. Renee got a new job as a waitress and even signed up for online college classes. She and Abby also started attending services at the church where Steve was a deacon. On nights when Renee had to work, Steve was always available and happy to watch Abby. One day, Renee's computer died, and she went to use Steve's computer to complete her assignment. Renee discovered photos and videos on his computer that showed that Steve had been going into Abby's room at night. There were photos of Abby without her PJs on, both asleep and awake, and videos of Steve sexually abusing Abby. Later, Renee learned that Steve also sold the photos and videos online for other men to watch. I know how difficult it can be to hear a story like this. What may be even more shocking is how common these stories are for some children. At Care House, we hear dozens of story like, dozens of stories like Abby's. The truth is that at least one in 10 children will become victims of sexual abuse before they turn 18. More kids suffer from sexual abuse than from asthma and autism combined. These numbers are surely more higher than our best estimates, because most children never tell. These stories are familiar to children of every race, gender, and economic status. Over 90% of child victims know their abuser. Those who molest children look and act just like everyone. Abusers can be neighbors, friends, coaches, teachers, clergy, parents or family members. They can be adults or children. They can be men or women. Is that my three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. You can, you can finish.
Okay. Care House, for every community in Macomb County where our Spare the Trauma of multiple interviews, after the forensic interview, Care House also offers follow-up support services for child victims and their parents. These services include crisis counseling, child safety assessments, access to forensic medical examinations, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy referrals, to other needed community services. And as designated by the Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Church Fund, Care House offers child abuse prevention information and education. Just the statistics really quickly. Since our opening in 1996, we have conducted over 7,900 child forensic interviews with 266 of those children residing in the city of Mount Clemens. In 2018, we provided 753 interviews total. 31 of those kids reside in Mount Clemens. In 2019, we provided 757 interviews. 24 of those children resided at Mount Clemens. This year, we're asking for support, $7,200, $200 that will support 12 of Mount Clemens' child victims and their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Karen Curl, and I'm the director of the Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers Program. The Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers Program has been providing help to older and disabled adults throughout Macomb County for 27 years now. We have hundreds of volunteers each year that serve hundreds of individuals who are struggling to remain safe and independent for as long as possible in their own homes. Volunteers provide rides to doctor's appointments, help with grocery shopping, friendly visits for those who are isolated and alone, respite breaks for caregivers who are 24/7 taking care of a loved one. Today, I come before you to ask for support for our Safe at Home Program, which provides chores, minor home repairs, and housekeeping support for older and disabled adults. Over our entire history, we've served over 4,000 clients thus far, last, a couple hundred of which live in Mount Clemens. Last year, we served 21 individuals, residents of Mount Clemens, and two of our staff are residents of Mount Clemens, too, so they have a real keen interest in making sure that their neighbors that they know are getting the support they need to stay in their own homes for as long as possible. Today's request is for, again, support for our Safe at Home Program, which provides those basic necessities that not only helps a person stay in their own homes, but helps keep their properties in better shape, too. If someone can't take care of an extensive yard cleanup, they have debris in their yard, they need to cut their bushes, they need raking done, we can send out a team who can help with that. If someone has a leaky faucet and it's dripping, or a leaky shower, and it's causing structural damage eventually as, you know, it seeps into the wood, we can have someone head out there and take care of a service like that. Also, things like just routine housekeeping, but also decluttering, so homes aren't fire hazards any longer. We have volunteers who will help with all those types of services. Last year, our volunteers provided nearly 1,500 hours of such services in the community, but the need is growing, and we're always looking to increase our services and help as many people as possible. We're very thankful for your support. In the past, Mount Clemens has provided funding through the CDVG program for the last couple of years, including this year, and for fiscal year 2020, 21, we request an additional $840 for next fiscal year to provide services throughout Mount Clemens. Any questions about what we do, or our program in general? Again, thank you so much for previous support. We're very hopeful that you can continue to support us so we can do what we do to help keep people safe and independent at home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing for the allocation of Community Development Block Grant funding for fiscal year 2020.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Moving on to 9B, introduction and first reading of amendments to Section 12.201, Section 1 of the Election Precincts Boundaries Ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of amendments to Sections 12.201, Section 1 of the Election Precincts Boundaries Ordinance and set February 3rd, 2020, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
At the city commission meeting of January 6th, 2020, the city commission approved the permanent relocation and consolidation of voting precinct number five, from Karen Jermaine Jackson Community Center to City Hall, located at 1 Crocker Boulevard, to become precinct number six. As a result, City Ordinance 12.201, Section 1, the Election Precincts Boundaries, needs to be amended to reflect the change by combining the boundaries of precincts five and six, thereby creating a new boundary for precinct six and eliminating the boundaries of precinct five, and updating street names for clarification. The Election Commission approved the relocation and consolidation of precincts five and six at their meeting of December 19th, 2019.
Do we have any discussion? Go ahead. Commissioner Mensah?
I just wanted, would like you to tell the residents how they will be notified of the change.
Residents will be notified through a mailing. They're receiving a new updated voter identification card, which tells them where to go vote, and will be advertised in the paper and posted at City Hall, as well as posted at Karen's Community Center or Jermaine Jackson Center on the doors, so that they know on Election Day where they need to vote.
Thank you.
We have consolidated this, this voting precinct from, with five and six together at City Hall for how many years now?
It's two years, really. It's four elections. It was all of the elections in 2018 and the one election we had in 2019.
And we saw increased voter participation when we moved it to City Hall from the Community Center, correct?
Yes, we did.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes. Moving on to 9C, request approval of agreement with AKT Peerless for Environmental Consulting Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Dickinson Wright, PLLC retaining of AKT Peerless to provide professional consulting services on the city's behalf for calendar year 2020 pursuant to the attached environmental services agreement.
Support.
AKT Peerless Environmental and Energy Services has provided environmental consulting services for several years to Dickinson Wright, PLLC, the city's environmental attorneys regarding the methane activity at the former Mount Clemens landfill site. Continuing methane monitoring and reporting to the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Quality, as well as fine-tuning the operation of the active methane venting system, are critical stages of the project that make AKT Peerless continued professional consulting services necessary. Dickinson Wright, PLLC, has further advised that no competitive advantage would occur to the city if these professional services were submitted for requests for proposals, and in fact, the project would suffer significantly if new environmental consulting services were engaged at this time. Therefore, please find the attached environmental services agreement for calendar year 2020 with AKT Peerless Environmental and Energy Services.
Questions, discussion? We have maintained the methane acceptable rates for how long now?
I don't know. We've been at this for 15-plus years.
Over 15-plus years. So we, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that because of the kind of ongoing controversy at Quinn Road Park with Clinton Township, that this methane project has been well-maintained. We have fallen within the DEQ and the EPA guidelines, and it's a well-maintained project, so that it doesn't endanger any of our residents.
Correct.
So I just want everyone to be clear on that, so when you hear things about Quinn Road and the park and that kind of not-well-maintained project, that it's not confusing to you, that our project is going well.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay. Item 90, approve purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment invoices as presented.
Support.
Yes, Commissioner Mensah, discussion.
Could you just refresh my memory of why the one-year extension for JC Landscaping and Sprinkler System Services, you know, wasn't an agenda item and is just included in the bills? Was it a contract? Don't contracts normally get signed?
No, a lot of the contracts include the opportunity to extend. It could be a one-year contract with the opportunity to extend for multiple years beyond, provided the city's happy with the services and vendor doesn't increase the pricing.
Okay.
So it's the same exact contract. There's nothing, it's, it's just extending the date of that contract, so it's not a new contract.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Agenda item 10, consent agenda? There is nothing, okay. Item 11, city manager's report.
Candidate packets for city commission are available for residents who are interested in filing for the vacancy on the city commission. To qualify as a candidate, you must be at least 18 years of age, a registered voter, and a resident of the city for at least 365 days. The candidate filing deadline is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 4:00 PM at the city clerk's office. Christmas trees will continue to be collected by the city's refuse contractor on your regularly scheduled trash pickup day through January 25th, 2020. Please make sure the chair, the tree is bare and not in a plastic bag when placed at the curb for pickup. The 15th Annual Fire and Ice Chili Cook-Off Fundraiser will take place Thursday, January 30th, from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM at various downtown restaurants. All proceeds benefit the Mount Clemens Goodfellows and the Anton Art Center. And the 15th Annual Mount Clemens Ice Carving Show will take place downtown on Friday, January 31st, through Sunday, February 2nd. For more information on either event, please contact the Downtown Development Authority at 586-469-4168. And we'd like to thank the following employees for their service and dedication to the city. Captain Greg Hoppy has retired from the fire department after 25 years of service, and Steven Anderson has retired from the Department of Public Services after over 33 years of service. We wish both of them a very happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? We'll start with, oh, sorry, public participation. Thank you for keeping me. This is the portion of the meeting where we, again, ask for public participation. If you would so be inclined, we ask for your name, your address, and for two minutes this time. Anyone?
Dolores Kusinie, Act 250, Euclid. I'm the application for commissioner. You said that 21 are resident of Mount Clemens, and I didn't hear the other two.
18 years old.
18, okay.
Resident of Mount Clemens.
Right.
For at least 365 days and a registered voter.
Okay, I agree with all those, but one thing I think that you, I suggest you put on there, they should be experienced in some field. I mean, communications with people, a county background, or a secretarial, or typist, or computer, not just get somebody up there that can't answer a question, because we residents depend on our commission and our mayor, the mayor or board, the commissioners, everything, to help us with our decisions, and we need somebody that has some logic of thinking. It's the only way I can put it. At least have a minimum of a high school education with some one or two classes background. You don't need a college degree. You do not need a full four-year education, but at least some work experience to answer a normal question.
Unfortunately, that can't be done.
I know.
Those are charter provisions.
But, doesn't hurt to ask.
There would have to be a charter amendment.
Can we make it charter? Can we make it?
Put on the ballot.
Well, can we do that? Nothing can be eliminated. I'm just making a suggestion. I know what you're saying, Mr. Murray, but you're long enough to know this, but still. I'm gonna tell you in plain English. You need some brains to be on the board. I'm a college grad, but my specification is Italians, immigration, from one city to another. That's all I can talk about. You get me talking about saving money in taxes or building a tree in a backyard. Forget that. I know what I can talk about, okay? But you get people up there can't even answer civilized question. Okay, you know what I'm talking? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We'll go down to Commissioner comments this time. Commissioner Voorhees.
I would like to, again, reiterate and thank you for mentioning about the candidates filing. This is open not just to the.
Do we have five people came in?
It's not just open to those five. I would hope ten people run for the City Commission. And I hope that people live on, that live on Canfield and Euclid and North Rose and a few others will turn around and do what we did, and that is get the petitions signed and filed, and then kind of put your money where your mouth is and get out there and campaign. Knock on doors. You know, if you grew up in, like I did, on Canfield, and you didn't know anybody in Seminole Hills, that's where you ring the doorbells. So I'm hoping that we have a number of candidates, a number of good, qualified candidates, run for the City Commission. Again, the packets are ready. Is that is correct?
Yes.
The number of signatures needed?
No less than forty and no more than one hundred.
Hear that? Forty and no more than a hundred. Good luck to everyone who decides to run. And we just had Martin Luther King Day yesterday. I'd like to make a mention of some of our local heroes. And three or four of them come to mind. One is Dr. Louis Rickman, M.D., who was the first Negro American, African-American physician at St. Joseph Hospital in Mount Clemens. And probably delivered thousands of babies in our area. His son, he was the first elected to the Mount Clemens Community School District. And I believe, I graduated nineteen sixty-nine. I believe he signed my diploma. He might have been secretary, or he might have even been president at that time. Certainly a hero in the local, in Mount Clemens. Another was Bonner Upshaw, Senior, who was the first African-American police officer in Mount Clemens. Bonner, when he retired, went to work for First National Bank where I worked. And we always felt a lot safer when Bonner was on duty. And the last is a classmate of mine who passed this past year, Wally Chambers, who went on, who was a gentle giant, who went on to become a national football player for the Chicago Bears. And certainly was one of our heroes. So I'd just like to mention that, you know, we have a lot of heroes right here at Mount Clemens, and I think that they need to be honored. So thank you for your time.
You forgot Bill Sonnyford.
And you forgot your quote, sorry. You forgot your Clemente quote. Once a Clemente.
I should, yeah, I should. They need to end that way. You're right. Once a Clemente, always a Clemente.
It's on brand.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Mensah, sorry.
And we'll add Bill Sonnyford to that list.
Absolutely.
He was a champion for all residents of the city of Mount Clemens. So I want to thank the charities who have applied for our portion of the CDBG funding. I want to thank you for the service that you have given to the residents of our city, for the work that you do that's very important, and tell you that we appreciate your services to our residents. I hope everybody spent yesterday, if not in service, in reflection. Several of us here attended the Ministerial Alliance Breakfast yesterday. It was very inspiring. The North Broadway Church of Christ, those people can sing. It was an awesome presentation, and I enjoyed it very much. Jaden Tillman won second place for the Interfaith Center for Racial Justice at the MLK Dinner for his photographic submission under the title, "Love is Spoken Here." Jaden is a student at our high school. There are good things happening in our school system. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
I too want to thank the three agencies that came here tonight for the work they do for the residents of our city. And I also want to thank the City Clerk's Office for their work and their helping increase voter participation. So that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond. Commissioner Fournier.
In addition to the three that came here tonight, we also had someone else in our audience who, and at the work session, from the New Generation Ministry, who is also on the list of potential to receive some of the CDBG funds. And they have a very interesting program and are new to, are right here in Mount Clemens as well. In addition, I do hope everyone that applied for the City Commission vacancy will run. It doesn't take a lot of money. I spent less than, much to my aunt's disgust, who tried to, who was my campaign manager, I think I spent less than a hundred dollars. But mostly people want to see you. They want to meet you, and they want to shake your hand and tell you what they think. And they want to be listened to. So I hope you all run. But I also say to the voters, it's up to you to vet these candidates. It's difficult, and sometimes, especially for city commissioner, City Commission vacancies, we don't always look real close. We, the voters need to really get involved, and you can do that by when you are out there talking to them. And I would just add one more person to the list, because he's just someone very special to me to recognize at MLK Day, and we all miss his little quotes, and that would be Roger Button. I have, he's a special person in my life, and I really appreciate all that he has done for the city. Thank you.
I too want to reiterate the importance of running for office and vetting candidates. I think although the qualifications on paper are slim, right? It doesn't take a whole lot. It's a resident, three hundred and sixty-five days residency, a registered voter, and being eighteen years old. It takes a lot to make decisions. And so I think it's, as each of us, a voter, our responsibility to make sure that the people that we're voting in are not just a, you know, friendly face, but are also going to listen and choose wisely. So I'd like to thank the plow drivers and everyone who worked on Saturday's snowstorm. It was a tough go to be a plow driver on Saturday. It happened at a, you know, during the middle of the day, and so it wasn't the evening where you get less people on the road. It was a challenging snowfall with it being so heavy, and then with the freezing rain afterwards. I think they did a great job, and I commend them for, it's a dangerous job, and I think we forget that. And also, they removed the snow in the downtown area quite expeditiously, I would say. And I was downtown on Sunday morning, and they were still removing all the huge piles from after just plowing the middle of the street. So they did a great job, and I want to, I know they didn't have much sleep, so please pass that along. I would like to thank everyone for attending my coffee talks this month. They were very, very well attended, and it's so nice to see people come out and want to hear about the good things that are happening in Mount Clemens, and for them bringing their, you know, their questions. It was a really great, both of them were very well attended. And so I'd like to thank everybody who made the effort to come out and talk. I will be having coffee talks in February. February eleventh at nine thirty A.M. is a tentative date because I will be out of town, and I'm hoping that one of my fellow commissioners will, would like to attend and run that coffee talk for me at nine thirty A.M., February eleventh, at John's Family Grill. So if any of you are interested, I'm putting you on the spot and hoping that you'll help me out with that. February thirteenth, I will be back, and that's at six thirty P.M. And, you know, we, of course, welcome everyone to attend those meetings. I too attended the Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast by the Macomb County Ministerial Alliance, and it was an inspiring morning. I would like to congratulate Pastor Larry Ireland, who is now the new Vice President of the Ministerial Alliance, but also received an award honoring his work with the children of Mount Clemens, and specifically with his after-school and summer programs. So thank you very much for all of your work. And, oh, and I just screwed up my quote here. Sorry about that. Of course, they have got a pop-up ad. So I guess I will spare us from another quote from me. So thank you very much, and I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session.
Support. Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
We'll have a five-minute recess and then go into executive session.
There's a motion to invite two of the candidates for city manager back, Timothy Novak and Donald Johnson, for a second round of interviews.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.